Wow! Hey Portal, call Kermit!
Fozzy!
Kermit!
I said everyone up Portal so we can be together no matter where we are!
Look, it's going where you go!
Think he's got like a smart camera?
Hell, Chicago!
A great city, but the winters are unbearable!
Nicky, it's good to see you.
You too, Kenny.
On June 11th... Guys with no pay taxes over it, but you come to terrorize by committing... Why you got so many white boys in the porn in the southeast side of Fort Worth? I got a problem with this. That sister was exhibiting Texas penal code statute 941. She has the right to protect her property. Your officer had no bitches in her backyard. I had to do as much as he did. So today, no more. At senior keeper, no more. No pardon my community, no. And we don't employ people like that. We do not employ people like that. They be cooked so. How much money? Y'all need to get my people far so you can exercise yourself back the way Canada went to came from. North Carolina, like with the storm. Time for you to go. How can you have that person that stays liberated all the time running this city lately? He's on a film in civil league. We can't have it. So he blasts the light, draws the target out. Of course she's a woman, she's afraid, she protecting her nephew. And we want child endangerment charges. Oh, you know, you see them? Murder, child endangerment, using deadly use force. So today, ain't no more senior. Ain't no more senior. You can't come in our community, terrorizes no more. Cause we ain't gonna tolerate it. We will fight. So he blasts the light, draws the target out, boom! Of course she's a woman, she's afraid, she protecting her nephew. And we want child endangerment charges. Oh, this Mr. Dean. Oh, you know, you see them? Murder, child endangerment, using deadly use force. So today, ain't no more senior. Ain't no more senior. You can't come in our community, terrorizes no more. Cause we ain't gonna tolerate it. We will fight back. I'm gonna take a page out of my daddy book. Our movement, a boycott. Not letting you make this money, no more in this city. That was the strongest move my daddy showed me. It's hard to look for me to go home and look at my daddy in my face. I can't look at my father in my face. Cause we are so coward down, we have played the game, we have sold out. It's embarrassing. We can't take, we can't do this no more. So my evolution is my revolution. Those who wanna stand with me and fight this fight the right way, hey, I'm here. I'm here to help. That's why kids don't expect us to really do this fight. Well, we gonna fight today. Texas penal code 941.
Your time's up, Mr. Austin.
Texas penal code 941.
Of Juan L., who will be followed by Cleveland Harris.
Yes, my name is Obaywale L. I'm a resident of Fort Worth, Texas. Living in District 5. Donna Regina Business is my councilwoman. I'm here, uh, let me just share a little bit about myself. I'm a longstanding, uh, community activist in the city of Fort Worth. One of my accomplishments is an organization that I was, uh, associated with, worked with Fort Worth ISB to bring in the first African African American infusion curriculum in the state of Texas here to Fort Worth. We have done numerous activities with various other organizations, which means I have an opportunity to network with other people, get their opinions, find out how they're feeling and so forth. And that's what I'm here to report today. That the general consensus of the southeast Fort Worth and most people around Fort Worth that I've had an opportunity to network with, do not feel safe in this city. They do not trust the Fort Worth Police Department to effectively investigate this recent crime in which Ms. Jefferson lost her life in her own home. I believe his standard procedure is anytime in investigation of another police department is none, to be called in the Texas Rangers. I suggest we start there. And FBI should be called also because as a result of the, uh, uh, task force on, uh, race and whatever. We know that there's systemic racism within the city of Fort Worth. Everybody's operating on the old values and we can't continue to do that. People are scared, scared people begin to hurt people. We're trying to, it seems as though an environment is being built where some individuals would not be as tolerant of the improprieties that we suffered over the past years. Now, I'm not trying to make any threats, I'm not trying to say that a war is brewing, but y'all got eyes just like I do. My, uh, purpose is to come to an equitable resolution to where we can receive justice and go forward as a city together without all of those outdated racial presidential practices that continue to hold us back as a city. Not only do we need an outside entity to investigate this crime, I called upon the police department to set up, uh, opportunities to network, to workshop with community individuals and educate us on the proper way that we need to interact with you. You know, cause I've been involved, I've been on the chief's advisory board. I've been to several different, uh, trainings and, and community outreach endeavors and so forth. None of that seems to work with all of those nice individuals, you know. Now I have friends who work in the police department, but when all those individuals are gone away and something takes place in the middle of the night, it's always one of my peers that end up dead and the police department never gets held accountable. All that has got to change. And I call for your assistance in this matter. Thank you.
Cleveland Harris. Cleveland Harris will be followed by Zach Thompson.
On June 11th, at 11 o'clock PM, 19, now 2019, I stood before this council for police oversight board. I warned you that this was coming. Before that young lady got shot, I stood here and warned you that this was coming. There's one thing I want you to know. That I said on the advisory board of the chief of police since the days of Code Blue. And that was back in 1991. For 16 years, I brought proposition to the, uh, to police advisory board that had never came up, only two. And one was sensitivity classes, which they have now, that's 10 years behind. And the second one, do you research people, is the camera. The city of Chicago, Illinois was the first and Fort Worth, Texas was the second. Do you actually think that that happened accidentally? I had to set up my own core team of three African Americans and one Anglo-American to chew out what we call Mayberry history. It's like my brother got up and walked out the door, that's Mayberry. We can't have that attitude anymore. You are behind the times. We need advisory board that is gonna be non-racist bigotry and non-on many levels, not just color, but on many levels. Because it affects also the gay rights, it accept the European rights, it accepts the Hispanic rights, and especially the African American. You are late. You are behind the times. You let other cities start sensitivity classes until you, until you finally woke up to what was going on. But this is ridiculous.
Okay, that's the best part, when he said you are late, you are behind the times. And that's how the mindset of racism go. They are way behind the times. It's like, that was so long ago, but just like, how is it still citizens are being taught racism? And still, like he said, in the Mayberry times. But like I said, their mindset are way behind times, bigot, bigots, racist, so on. Let's continue this video. So he, so far he's the best speaker. And of course the dude with the vest on somewhat, maybe number three or four, best speaker.
I continue with people suffering and getting shot, being pulled over. We need those classes in the classroom, which Mary, you signed that same night, or classes to be, to be, be signed. So it, it doesn't have to be this way. But again, if I have to stand here and be Moses, I will.
But again, if I have to stand here and be Moses, I will. Right on, right on, right on, brother, right on, for real, right on.
Zach Thompson will be followed by Arch Mayfield.
But this is, um, is it Moses freed the people? Like, how about free the people mind, even though, we're not gonna go into that. Let's continue this video, this is Zach Thomas. Of course you can see he's Caucasian and I'm not really racist, but I'm just, this for the people who say, oh, he's Caucasian, he gonna come up there and say something stupid. Again, you know, all people not racist, or blind racist, you know, that will agree to something stupid, you know. Let's continue the video.
My name is Zach Thompson, I live in District 9 and I am here to echo the calls for justice. I have lived in Fort Worth for almost 20 years and live in a mostly affluent neighborhood where our biggest unrests are caused by the number of stop signs and speed bumps. In 2015, I remember watching the reactions to police shootings in cities like Baltimore and Ferguson play out over the news and feeling distant from that reality. I felt distant from the reality that police tactics were different for black people than they were for white people. I felt distant from the reality that the academic environment for black students was significantly worse than that of white students. I felt distant from the reality that my black neighbors have a life expectancy that is more than 10 years shorter than mine. I sincerely believe that while these circumstances were true for African Americans in other places, they could...
Far as schools go, they do put, um, I guess you got shitty teachers. I don't know, let's go back to his points.
The reality that my black neighbors have a life expectancy that is more than 10 years shorter than mine.
Yeah, we'll start with that one, life expectancy 10 years shorter. I mean, how can that be unless, you know, you're eating unhealthy? Or you, and getting into some trouble? I mean, I can't say police shooting black people takes 10 years life expectancy off of blacks life because of police shootings. So, I understand he being sympathetic to the situation. I'm just breaking down things I hear as I go and explaining or talk about it. I understand, I understand.
I sincerely believe from that reality. I felt distant from the reality that police tactics were different for black people than they were for white people.
You can say police tactics, I mean, when you become an officer, you're trained, you're supposed to be trained one way. I don't know if they, when you go to, um, sign up to be an officer in the 80s or 90s or 70s, that you were trained to treat a black different from a white person. I think it's all just one training fits all. Like, when you get trained, that's for anybody you encounter. Far as, um, prejudice go, that's not, you're not trained to be prejudiced. And that prejudice lead to, um, certain actions, irrational actions. Um, so, far as training goes, I mean, what, what? Unless they got secret policies that say beat a black up or something? Man, it's more of, it's more of the Mayberry attitude. Like the dude before was talking about Mayberry. And Mayberry is, um, Andy Griffin, The Andy Griffin Show back in the 60s. Cause how many black people you see on The Andy Griffin Show? I still haven't seen one yet, and I've been watching that show for a long time, for a while, for a long time. Over that show is, I still haven't seen one. Cause I ain't seen every episode, maybe there is one, but I haven't seen one black person on The Andy Griffin Show. So again, police tactics, they're trained to, they're trained to techniques are for everybody of any race. It's when you're racist and prejudiced that you go out of, go out of pocket, go out of the way and do something stupid. Like some of these officers who keep getting off on murder, you know.
I felt distant from the reality that the academic environment for black students was significantly worse than that of white students. I felt distant from...
I gotta research that, but it's, I guess it's truth to what he say also. But by academics, does he mean that the work is easier in majority black neighborhoods? Like the work is easier or what? And he say the academics is different, right? I mean, really, I, the people who graduate in black neighborhoods out of elementary, middle, and high school, I mean, you can't say that about them though, cause of the work, they didn't graduate? Or you saying the work is easier for black people? You know? Cause a teacher, you can have shitty teachers in any school, to be honest, to be honest. You can have shitty teachers who don't do their job properly in any, any situation.
The reality that my black neighbors have a life expectancy that is more than 10 years shorter than mine. I sincerely believe that while these circumstances were true for African Americans in other places, they could not be a condition of reality in Fort Worth, Texas. My city is better. Over the last four years, through many tough conversations and experiences, God has opened my eyes to see that the realities of injustice and oppression, which I saw in places like Baltimore and Ferguson, are the same realities that my African American neighbors experience in Fort Worth, and it may be worse. There's a lot to say for why and how, but with limited time, I want to make three quick points. First, the behavior of certain Fort Worth police officers over the last, last 12 month is appalling. The brutality and arrogance in which they carried out the killings that people like Jaquaidian Slanton and Atachianna Jefferson are unconscionable. We as leaders have a moral duty to speak out against the leadership of Fort Worth PD. Second, the problem is not limited to the police. Contained within Fort Worth is a zip code with the lowest life expectancy of any zip code in the entire state of Texas, and 76104 is mostly black. Per TEA's recent score ratings, elementary schools with mostly black students were rated far lower than elementary schools with any other predominant ethnicity. Black people have longer commutes to doctors, pharmacies, grocery stores, you name it. Bottom line, it seems that our leadership, that my leadership has promoted prosperity, which has overlooked the African American community. Third, and finally, some encouragement. To my white leaders and friends, do not buy into the narrative that speaking out against police is somehow un-American. I too, I too...
There's a drug store on every corner, you know, they don't care who they pushing pills to, you know. But just listen, just keep listening. So we're gonna leave off from what he say, my white peers and friends.
Finally, some encouragement. To my white leaders and friends, do not buy into the narrative that speaking out against police is somehow un-American. I too, I too am grateful to... I too, I too am grateful to sleep under the security blanket provided by our police, but the sacrifice and service of most does not cleanse the wickedness of some. Cowardness is not found in speaking up, but instead, it is found in your silence. To my black leaders and friends, I mourn with you. My heart hurts for you. In your suffering, I encourage you as the apostle Paul encouraged the Christians in Rome, hope in what you do not see. I pray eagerly for justice in this life, but my hope is for justice in heaven with a God who promises to punish the wicked and glorify those found righteous in Jesus. As a father, as a father, oh, as a father of three, I want my children to have character traits like perseverance, courage, and endurance. You and your ancestors are the best of their role models. Thank you for the three minutes.
Arch Mayfield will be followed by Bishop Kirkland.
So, that was a, that was a good speech, that was a good speech. Got the crowd riled up, we got the crowd riled up, in a good way though, that's a good speech. Now you gonna have those, um, Jesus haters. Hopefully they don't put this on, uh, national news with the guy talking about Jesus. You gonna have people coming out talking crap about Jesus on YouTube. You had, you had the dad saying he don't want no hug. Um, Atachianna Jefferson dad saying, I don't want no hugs. Say, yeah, we gonna be no hugs around here. Really? You had to bring that up? Um, I understand people will take time to forgive and people might not forgive others, but hey, it's not great to hurt others. But that happens to do with people who are non-Christian and just don't practice forgiveness, I guess. Or don't think it's that important to that extent. Alright, let's play this video.
Arch Mayfield, 6140 Avery Drive, City Council District 3. I'm here to say a few words about why we need a strong community police oversight board more than ever, not less than ever. Although I'm not here to say I told you so, I will remind you that Gerald Banks Senior has been telling you so, week after week, telling you where we're headed and why we need strong police oversight. Without taking a breath, I could name 20 more people who have been telling you where we're headed and why we must act to create that strong oversight board. As tragic as the killing of Atachianna Jefferson is, many people here do not see that as an isolated tragedy, but rather the culmination, the almost natural culmination of events that have occurred over the last few years and particularly the last few months. The city of Fort Worth appears to have acted uncharacteristically fast in response to this tragedy, but I suppose we'll never know all the machinations that took place behind the scene to accomplish that apparent speed. But wouldn't it have been better, far...
Okay, I gotta rewind one minute to what he said about the last few years and, yeah.
The city of Fort Worth appears to have acted uncharacteristically fast in response to this tragedy, but I suppose we'll never know all the machinations that took place behind the scene to accomplish that apparent speed.
To accomplish that apparent speed. That was fast how they released the body cam. And he like, what happened behind scene? That made it so you can release the body cam like that so fast? Or whatever he was saying, y'all go back.
But wouldn't it have been better, far better, for more of you to advocated early on for a strong community police oversight board? And better to have adopted a budget that unmistakably showed your determination to create robust oversight rather than an anemic attempt at oversight? This is not just hindsight, because it's not too late to create an oversight board that is fully funded, fully staffed, fully independent, disentangled...
Okay. I can't find the part, but I remember what he said. He was talking about how the incidents with the police, with the police shootings has been happening in past couple of months, couple of years, or whatever recent incidents. If you remember back in the 60s, 50s, and 40s, that this was happening more often, like Mayberry, uncharacteristic? Like what you see now was a lot worse. Like, it was clear cut that they murdered a black person back in the 70s, 60s, 50s, 40s. And it was clear cut. You didn't have as many cameras back then, you didn't have a mindset of, you know, we need to put cameras on these officers and charge them. But going back to the 60s, 50s, 40s, you know, more KKK. Um, my point is, it's been happening like over 100 years with the police. It's been happening over 100 years with the police, y'all, this is not nothing new. Now this was, um, if this was 1940, y'all, this would be every day, y'all, this would be every day. For real, and I believe police, it probably, if blacks in any certain waveform had access to guns back in the 40s, there was a lot more police shootings back in the 40s. Alright. If blacks had guns in the 40s by whatever means or ways and 50s, I bet it was a lot more killings. Cause, um, the mindset back then was a lot worse than what you see now. You know, you can still go to some areas and find some ignorant white folks, or them ignorant ass neo-Nazis, right? Still, ain't gotta be no neo-Nazi to be, or racist, white or racist black. You know, you just be programmed, welcome to America, welcome to Western society, that's okay. Yeah, crazy.
Entangled from the seduction of POA money and free from any conflict of interest. Those of us who attend city council, week after week, know that our council and city like to showcase their accomplishments and even to boast of achievements. So here's the challenge. Fort Worth can brag about being the city that utterly destroyed the old adage, there's no such thing as bad publicity. Instead, Fort Worth can be the city with the community police oversight board that's the envy of all cities trying to create desperately need oversight boards. Only time will tell, but it is running out. Thank you.
Well, 100 plus years of, um, cop, well, I'm not even gonna include the black cops. So how many black cops was it in 1910, 20s, 30s, 40s, 1880? Not too many. Even some, some black cops just do their job. And can be prejudiced towards black people also. Cause that's the mindset of Mayberry Western civilization. But, um, it's gotten a lot better. I'm saying, humanity has gotten a lot better since the 40s, 50s, and beyond. Still, some of our time's running out, it's been, it's been a long time, you know. Guess integration to a certain point has helped, has helped, but there's still work to be done when it comes to, um, getting rid of race, or getting rid of racism. Still some work need to be done. That's in everybody, not just police, that's everybody. Police just so happen to have a badge and gun. And, um, you got jurors that sympathize with murderers. Everyone's clear cut murder, they just sympathize with murderers. It's not all cases every case, but it's some cases, and that just don't make no sense. You got some weird cases that ended up with the, um, cop going free. So, play the video.
Phil Welberd will follow Bishop Kirkland.
I don't want this cop to look like the sacrificial lamb because he is only the byline. He's not the subject, the subject is the culture of the Fort Worth Police Department. Ms. Jackson must remain the focal point, no guns in her house, no guns in her hands. Whatever layers an officer who is responsible for communicating with the Fort Worth cartel lies and the Dallas Morning Clues must restrain from attempting to villainize the victim in this situation. I'm calling on the media to be responsible as they report on Mrs. Jefferson. I have some questions that demand answers. Now, on one of your community's holidays, how does someone get arrested late in the afternoon and no judge or magistrate is working on the holiday, get out of jail so quickly? If that was someone from my village as early as to be expected... If that was someone from my village, as early as to be expected, we could've gotten-
Do, 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 do. He's asking, "How did the officer get out of jail so quickly?" And let me go see, make sure that it's the officer, but that's what he referring to. When the officer got arrested, wasn't no judge or, um, magistrate. So how did he get out of jail so quickly? And to me, that like brings a piece to a part of the host. You know, this is a host. That right there don't make sense. How'd you get out the day? How'd you get out of jail the same day? If, what he saying is true, which probably is. But, um, then again, he's showing, saying that's showing favoritism toward the cop also. And the other, and then, and another reality, whatever. He just showing favoritism towards the cop by letting him out early. I continue the-
...at lunchtime. Question, why we have trained our children to, to survive police stops? How do we train them to survive invasions by the police department? Question, why was tech mid-called after the shooting-
Correct. Cause they, they were trespassing, but they gonna say because of that badge, it's not trespassing. When niggas not your property, you a human, just like, you're a human. So if somebody pointed gun at you, they don't know who you are. I mean, you got flashlight in the window, I'm pretty sure she, she didn't know who the hell it was. Pointing her gun, she was language, and he shot her, so. Like, that, that like, too many special privileges, that's too many special privileges, priv- privileges. If you think, cause you have a badge, whatever color you are, you just walk up on property and just, I shoot somebody like that. And I think twice about maybe moving out the way or dunking down and, and avoiding the gun. She was, she was behind the window, she wasn't gonna run at you.
Instead of mid-star. Question, why does an open structure called in your- I was tech mid-called after the shooting instead of mid-star. Question, why does an open structure called in your community is handled like a, like a possible burglary in my community? Question, why in the last fourteen months, two African-Americans in their homes have been murdered by the police department, and not in the last forty-one years has anyone died in your home at the hands of the police? I have a warning that kangaroo court scene that played out in Dallas will not be tolerated here. There will be no hope, there will be no hair combing, there will be no come to Jesus or Allah, there will be no Bible's exchange, there will be no hugs and kisses.
Well, they wanna hug and kiss him, wha- whatever. I don't see the point of bringing that up. That's so irrelevant. It's just so irrelevant. Are you more worried about the hugs and kisses than worrying about getting police minds right? Getting people mind right, so they can prevent the crazy shit, and getting better training? Like, come on, I'm getting better police, really? The stupid crap going, the stupid crap going on is not the Bible. She giving him the Bible, her the Bible, and hugging. And that is, that is so irrelevant at this point. So irrelevant. Nigga, that's just throwing a shot insult at the Bible right there too, so. Whatever, we didn't have to bring that up, dawg, that's part of your speech, but whatever.
There will be no mockery of trials like the Courtney Johnson trial who almost murdered Mr. Adams. More than that, the Jackie Craig case, that crap that went on, we recognize now that-
You can bring up a lot of cases. You can go back to eighteen ninety and bring up a lot of cases against the police. You can bring up a lot of cases.
We're not running the sprint, we're running America. Chief, although we appreciate your transparency, and you're the best that we've ever had, please don't allow your pulse to be slowed down, or you to lose your consciousness. In closing, in Fort Worth, we'll no more-
Like, how do you not know the chief is not in on it? Or in on what's going on? And how do you not know the chief biased, or how the chief feel? I understand, talking about he good chief and all, but, you know, do you know what goes on behind the curtains? Cause you mentioned the officer getting out of jail the same day, with no judge or magistrate was there. So, alright. Good, good speech though, dawg, good speech, good speech though, dawg.
...be referred to as the place where the West began. The new name for Fort Worth would be the place where Negroes finally got tired of status quo in America. We're not dreaming like Martin King, we're not dying like Malcolm X, we're not fetching and bending like Willie Lynch.
So, all them, um, niggas in the back clapping when he puts down Martin Luther King and Malcolm X.
Status quo in America, we're not dreaming like Martin King, we're not-
Not dreaming like Martin Luther King. Ah, that's just an insult to y'all, that's just an insult. That man had a dream, and just so happened, um, dream came true, meaning you see more white and black people together, and it might tripping over white and black people being together like there was back then. I mean, the mindsets have changed some. But like I said, still work to be done. Again, you live in a racist American, um, culture, you're born into a racist American culture. So you're born into the program. If you realize you're in a program, you'll get your head out, out your ass, come together, and find out the real enemy. So it ain't the Bible, Bible ain't your enemy. You know, giving people hugs ain't your enemy. Martin Luther King ain't your enemy, Malcolm X ain't your enemy. You know, they gone dead. They did their part, whatever part they did was whoever, whatever with them situation, they did their part. They educated a lot of people. They educated a lot of people. Let me just agree with one hundred percent, everything of Martin Luther King and Malcolm X, there's still things you can nick and pick from both of them, and these guys gonna did their thing.
I'm like Malcolm X, we're not fetching and bending like Willie Lynch.
Thank you, Bishop. Elizabeth, Elizabeth Hill will follow Michael.
My name is Michael Wilborn, and I grew up in Fort Worth, Texas, went to the Dumbarton Schools, and as an African-American male, I was told, "Get your education, and everything will be okay." Went off and got a full scholarship to LSU, studied music, got out, taught within the Fort Worth Independent School District for two and a half years, opened up my own business, Wilborn Music Studio, again-
And he, he stating where he's from, not where he's from, he stating all he's done because he's black. So he feel like he gotta get up there and say, "Since, well, I'm black and I've done all this." And that's a lot crazy to me also. Like, just cause you're black don't, don't mean you're dumb. So if a white person not gonna get up there and state everything, a so-called white person, who y'all call white humans, won't get up there and do that same thing, so why are you- Like, the other white guy just went up there and spoke, I believe. Either so, they just, they don't get up there and give a background. I mean, I know why he's giving a background, cause, um, he's perceived as being black, a black human, in an American culture. And you know how American culture is. More so when they taking out the Bible now, so you see, you can see exactly what the American culture is leading to. Oh, god, y'all not leading yourself, cause, you know, hmm, you're leading yourself, and you got, you, someone leading y'all. It ain't the Bible, not, not everybody's been led by the Bible or by common sense. So, that's a message to the black conscious and white conscious community. Let's continue this video, might skip through him introducing what he does.
To teach music lessons to kids, to empower- When a police officer gets behind me, I feel afraid. Because when they pull me over, I especially feel afraid. I call my mother, and she's on the phone, just in case something happens. My brother usually gets the video camera going when, when he gets pulled over. This shouldn't be. This is post-traumatic stress. Our people are dealing with stress that they, they should not have to deal with. Am I saying it is your fault to him who knows to do good and refuse to-
And that's, and that's true, that's true, getting pulled over. Because everything they see, you see on TV, it's about police shooting blacks in traffic stops, so you get stressed. I won't worry about being shot when I got pulled over, so I mean, I won't worry about being shot, not what? I worry about why you put me over for? Yeah. But that is true what he saying, people, too, people do be like, "I hope this officer don't go buck wild on me." You know, "Hope this officer don't go, don't go crazy." But doesn't mean white innocent people shot in traffic stops by white cops. So, you know.
Just to do it, it is sin. What we hear is, the people are speaking, police oversight, police oversight. This is a government by the people for the people, the people have spoken, and the question is, what are you gonna do?
Elizabeth Hill?
All y'all up there need to give the speakers your undivided attention. Stop looking at your phones, stop writing.
What are you gonna do? Thank you.
Elizabeth Hill?
All y'all up there need to give the speakers your undivided attention. Stop looking at your phones, stop writing.
Elizabeth Hill?
Like, they looking at their phones, writing, and doing this and that, not paying attention. So, you know, corruption goes on, you won't believe what kind of corruption, you, you won't believe this shit, you won't believe it. It's more than Mister I, y'all, it's more than Mister I.
Elizabeth Hill? Elizabeth Hill, would y'all check outside? Jamal Johnson?
Good evening, it's a lot of places I'd rather be than be here. Jamal Johnson, nine thousand, Friendswood Drive, District Six. Mr. Jordan, I'm speaking to you.
Dawg, that's not a great way to start off a speech, man. I get what you're saying, though, I get what you're saying.
My fiancee and I bought our first house in District Six because we thought Fort Worth is where we wanted to be. Over this last year, sadly, we have lost faith in this city, its leadership, that's you guys, and especially the police. After the killing of Atatiana Jefferson, I'm ready to leave because no house is worth losing my life or the life of someone who I love.
And you got some racist white people and badges sitting down right now saying, "Well, go ahead and leave, NGG nigga." That's what they saying in badges. You got one dumbass white cop or a black cop back there thinking something fucking racist and stupid. Excuse the language, but you know what I mean, you know I'm telling truth. You know I'm telling truth, we got the smart ass racists back there. Cause they just not gonna stop being racist on the spot because they, they're speaking. So, you got smart asses in there. Smart ass devilish-
How can I raise a child in this city that is about to explode because of police brutality? The number one threat on my life is gun violence. Am I supposed to ignore this? We have no faith in justice, as it has become obvious that America isn't for us and neither is Fort Worth. How can we hope for justice with the district attorney office led by a known racist, when she is backed by the very same police lobby killing us, totally giving her a complete conflict a venture, preventing her objective pursuit of justice for days? How can we hope for justice when your very own ex-police chief accuses his former employee?
Well, she's a known racist, I mean, you live in a Western society, that's just about everywhere you go. Even in the Arab countries, they're, they're democracy now, they're more Western. So, but from the start, you know, like, she was infiltrated with racism, just like black fuck infiltrated with racism. Well, taught racist, and both vice versa, you're both taught racist, racism.
The city of Fort Worth of racism. Come on, y'all. Fort Worth, your streets are a mess, and it's spilling over into the halls. David Cook, that falls on you, you're sup-
He should've said, "America are racism, not just Fort Worth." Could've put, "America, Europe, Russia, some Arab countries on the list, maybe China, South Korea, Korea." Everybody's racist, everybody's racist towards one another.
Supposed to manage this city, is that not correct? The lack of leadership, that falls on you, Betsy Price. How can we feel safe if we die in our homes? Where are we safe? Maybe in a prison or a box, because that seems to be the only place you want us. How can we feel safe if we're being killed for flashlights? Chief Crouch, you haven't addressed that yet. You don't walk in our shoes, you're for the most part lily-white and old. Young black brown citizens are dying at epidemic rates. Wake up. Jerk is Jordan, you're my city council member. Fourteen years, and you still sit at that same seat like a grand wizard. Betsy Price, your time is up. You have led this city into destruction. You want to spend money on consultants? We want independent citizen oversight. No more money to McKinsey and Deloitte. Also, your rec, your resignation? Resignation for lack of leadership would be nice too. I would call for the FBI, but I have no faith in the federal government led by Trump and AG Barr. The system is rigged against us, and I am a walking target. Every day I put out my driveway and on my way to work, I fear that I will be killed. The status quo is comfortable for you guys, as you do not live this experience. You don't have guns pointed at you, you aren't being killed for living and breathing in your own home. Your arrogance and lack of compassion speaks volumes. You seem before us, not listening, inattentive, and frankly disgusting. May you all reap what you sow in the upcoming elections. There is no such thing as a blue light. Every time-
Thank you, thank you. He went into voting and all this stuff, so.
I see you described-
Nah.
Dominic Jones? Elizabeth Hill will follow Dominic.
Let me first start off with fire David Cook and Jay Jack. My name is Dominic Jones with the Party for Socialism Liberation. Murders like Atatiana's are lying to socialists. White supremacy, anti-blackness, systemic racism, systemic racism are at the very root of Fort Worth. Your so-called justice and rule of law is being recited by your fascist Bush soldiers who want to be the planter and think they're Judge Dredd. I say this to every city council member, the mayor, all of our police officers here, no matter how militarized, the people loan you the power, you do not own it, and have to fulfill your responsibilities many times, and it's only by the grace and mercy of the people that you have not been repossessed. And I'm not talking about voting, but the people are waking up to their true power here and in these streets and in the community. The fight will go on, Dan Price, and all power to the people.
Elizabeth, Elizabeth Hill, make it in.
People are trying to get in.
Minister Laiton, huh? Is Layton Muhammad here? Carl Bradley will follow Layton, Minister Muhammad.
Yeah, Betsy Price. I'm from District Five, interfering with my councilwoman. I'll start off by stating the obvious. I don't normally address the city council, but I do watch you. I do listen to you. And I'm standing with my community today because in light of these recent events in our city concerning murder, Atatiana Jefferson and the subsequent vexation or slash disheartened history of one area of the city. We stand as a united body today for the leadership of Fort Worth, Texas to let you know that we are not yet satisfied with these events. And we're not satisfied because history has taught us that we shouldn't celebrate too soon. We become comfortable with being given the short end of the stick. We become comfortable with injustice, but we're still really from the loss of a sister, of a friend, of a family member. And we're still hurting and we all suffer from a traumatic stress disorder. We are not satisfied because we still have unanswered questions. And we are not going to question anyone's insincerity when they say that they are sorry. However, I know what the word sorry means. The word sorry means that I'm so hurt. I'm so distressed over what happened that I will never go back to the same behavior again. When you say you're sorry, that means that you are willing to make a change in your behavior. When you say you're sorry, the word sorry denotes repentance. The word sorry denotes penitence. The word sorry represents repentance and the word repent literally means to think differently. Do you have to think differently about the way you have been running this city? Because the way you have been running it or the Fort Worth way has not been working for us. Challenge you to change. Change is difficult, but it's possible. You, when we study the history of police brutality, wasn't Darren Wilson? He said, quote, he wanted to go to a community where all the fun is. Africa guy could say that she wanted to live in a neighborhood where she felt she can get the most training. In other words, they want to be in a black community. Brothers and sisters, if they want to be in a black community, it means that they suffer from an implicit bias and the police department has to be changed and implicit bias back.
Who the gods with the earpiece? Yeah, bodyguards. But that's a good, that's a good speech though. That's good, that's good. But I just noticed the gods with the earpiece. Calm, let me calm down, y'all. Let me calm down. But his message was deep, you know? It can be deeper, but it was deep, it was deep. I'm, I'm in this video, this live right here. Y'all go over to, let me check it out. Tally buzzer for the full two hour video of the, uh, city council meeting. Um, this has been Aqua the Current and I will see you in the next video.